We're calling a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, September 3rd, at 4:30 PM. Order, first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what you wish us. I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, approve the consent agenda items, any discussion on any? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Item number two, conduct a public hearing on the final assessment rules for the 2018 MSAS Improvement Project, Mr. Kayler.
Thank you, Mr. President. This city council has scheduled a public hearing for the 2018 MSAS Improvement Project, which was reconstructed in 2018, a couple summer, or last summer. And it's German Street from Third North to Seventh North. It was a full reconstruction of underground utilities and roadway improvements as well, some sidewalk infill and pedestrian ramps, et cetera. The basic methodology was to assess $3,300 per residential parcel. There was a couple of individuals that requested some additional work, and that was also included in the assessment rules. So I have not received any written comments with regard to this hearing.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, anybody like to be heard on it? Or have any concerns, questions for Mr. Kayler? Nobody? Nobody? Lot of people here. Seeing none?
I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading, closing the public hearing and adopting the final assessment rule for 2018 surface reconstruction project payable over 10 years for a year period, along with a 4.4% simple interest rate charged on the unpaid balance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, off resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 2.1, raffle gambling permit, and that's for the New Ulm Sotoma Club, to be conducted at the country club on Wednesday, January 23rd, or 22nd, 2020.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Item 2.2, temporary intoxicating liquor license for the State Street Theater, and let me get a date on that one. And that's for November 1st, 2019.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Item, let's see, 4.1, consider a preliminary plant of Pluko, condition, can I get that close?
Yeah, yes.
All right.
The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval at the August 29th, 2019 meeting, and I believe staff's gonna give a little overview of it.
Dave Schnobrick, Community Development Director. In this particular instance, the applicant is John Pullman. The property owner is Heiko, a partnership. The Heiko property was occupied by Hyman Construction Company. And so the northerly portion of the Heiko property would be platted and then sold to The property lies between the bike trail and the Canadian Pacific Railroad Company, and it would abut First South Street. They are plating one lot, and the lot size would be .85 acres. The Planning Commission recommended three conditions. One is pay the plating fee of $180. Second is to provide an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2000 or newer format. And the final item is to provide any necessary utility easements. I would also note that the Planning Commission recommended that Mr. Pullman be advised that the commission felt it would be beneficial to include a parcel of property that the Pullmans owned to the east of this property that's being platted in the plat. And the reason that the Planning Commission suggested that is that property uses a meets and bounds legal description, and whenever there's an opportunity to plat a property, it really reduces the size of the legal description and makes much easier when it comes to transactions involving the property. And there's minimal cost to include another plat as long as it's, or another parcel as long as it's under the same ownership. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, the conditions on here also say, it says pay the plating fee of $180, the base fee of $150, and $30 per lot, is that still?
That's correct.
That's correct, all right, thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
With the conditions, excuse me.
With the conditions?
Yeah. Sorry.
No more discussion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Item 4.2, variance request from Jim Sheeman.
I'm gonna add, the Planning Commission recommended approval with the variance with two conditions at the August 29th, 2019 meeting. This is not a normal situation here, but the property abuts railroad tracks, and generally you would have a house with a detached structure. There's room for him to put up approximately a thousand square foot structure on the property, and he understands that the road will never be improved there, and...
No concerns from the neighbors?
No concerns from the neighbors, but John's got some staff report to touch base on here, to give you an overview.
John Nysley, planner. For just a little background on this one, it's legally described as parts of lots, 12 and 13 block 11 north of Center Street, and the street address is 1106 North Spring Street. Mr. Sheeman is actually asking for three different variances. One is to allow an accessory structure on the property without a permitted use, the second being to have a reduced front yard setback, which is typically 30 feet in this zoning district to 20, and then the third being a reduced rear yard setback. So, on this, currently this, the site is vacant. It is in the R2 zoning district and is surrounded by residences to the north, south, and west, but then industrial to the east across railroad tracks. The railroad tracks do cut these two lots almost in half, with part of the lots being on the west side of the tracks, the remainder of the lots on the east side of the tracks and under a different property owner. In addition, there were two conditions that the Planning Commission recommended. One was that the detached accessory building on the two lots shall not exceed 1,000 square feet in floor space and 16 feet in height. Two, the applicant will locate the property boundaries and verify the location of the proposed building on the site with city staff prior to starting building construction. But today, there was a third recommended condition, and that is to maintain and accommodate an existing stormwater drain, stormwater drainage on the east side of the property in parallel to the railroad tracks.
Maintain, so they already have that structure there?
There actually is, between this property and the railroad tracks, there is stormwater that drains, if I remember right, it's from south to north. And what we don't want to have happen is for that area to be filled in and to lose that drainage.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve, with conditions.
With the three conditions?
Three conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Thank you, John. Item 4.3, Virginia Suker Bolden interim use permit application, and that's for 1010 South Ridge Road. Got someone on that, John?
Well, from Planning Commission, recommended approval, one was stained, was a neighbor, and we gave it as an interim conditional use permit, meaning with some conditions, and it would be temporary for up to three years, and go from there.
I know, I see Ms. Virginia hiding way back in the corner, and can she come up here for a second?
Apparently it was a camera.
I wanna hear about you float, or this floating business. I had to look it up today on the internet.
You looked it up?
I looked it up.
Well, you need to come try.
Can you tell us about it?
Certainly.
Name and address, this is...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Virginia Comm Lake Floats. So floating is something that's been around since the 1950s. It has evolved from being kind of a new age type of an idea to currently being used by most Olympians, professional athletes, anybody who's working on really like improving their athletic game. So if you're a golfer, and you wanna take off a couple strokes, there's a way, this is a way that people use it, and I'll explain why. The other reason is pain, and that is why I became interested in it. I have a close family friend who had a very unusual illness that they could not figure out with traditional medicine, so she tried everything, and this was something that really helped her. So I started researching about three years ago. I went out east and took an internship and learned a little bit more. The idea is essentially, there is a tank in my house that has water in it, that has 900 pounds of salt. So unless if you would come to my house and lay in this tank, you would float, you know, it's only 10 inches, and the water would be exactly the temperature of your body, meaning that it would feel like you're not touching anything, which is the other reason that it's become interesting to people, because that doesn't happen very often. We're always on our phones, TVs, and I believe that's why the practice is becoming so popular. So when I started looking for, or reading about it, or learning about it, it was incredible, it was for the health benefits for my sister-in-law. But the more I looked into it, it became for the economic benefits. To me, this is something that we're gonna have in New Ulm eventually, if not, I mean, pretty soon, I just wanna be the one who does it. Originally, when I started the process, we were looking at storefront properties and things like, something that we can be downtown, which would be the goal. However, Mankato closed, because they had an issue, and we had the opportunity to get part of their business, part of their clients, really fast. So instead, we decided, under advisement from my teachers out east, that putting it near a house is a good opportunity to teach people about it, especially about, with people who don't, you know, it's hard to say, "Come, come float with me," when you don't know anything about it, and give me $75, even though you've never heard it. So what we've been trying to do is just let people try it, and learn, learn what the benefits are of the practice.
So you have one pod, it's in your house, only one person can come at a time, they'll park in your driveway, the information that I read, so it's not a parking issue, not a noise issue, it's not, you know, it's just a private in-home business.
Yes, yeah, the room is actually soundproof, and it will be completely blacked out of light too, so it'll be, yeah, I don't think anybody will even notice what we're doing, and I think it's a great opportunity to maybe lay the stones and set the groundwork for a new business down the road, for New Ulm downtown.
And there's six conditions. Sign the consent agreement, interim use permit is a three-year contract, business operations will not generate noise, customer parking will take place on the applicant property. My only, I'd be fine with striking that, if it's one, it seems a little restrictive to me. If it's one customer, one at a time, why do they have to park in the driveway? We don't require that in some of our massage places or hair cutting places, but that's just me. Number five, the applicant will pay the cost to record the permit and consent agreement with Brown County Recorder's Office, and the interim use permit is subject to all regulations, Section 922 of the New Ulm City Code. So if nobody else has questions, I'll go ahead and offer the resolution.
John wants...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry?
John.
John, behind.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to note that our office did receive one letter in opposition from up in that neighborhood, and I just wanted that...
Did they talk about what the concern was?
Yes, the concern, they had actually five concerns, and I can actually just read them off. They're concerned about the extra traffic, they were concerned about where the cars would park, they were concerned that this property, or the Suker Molden residence is located on a curve, and if people were parking on the street, then it might make kind of a blind area and a more dangerous driving situation. They wanted to keep this quiet residential neighborhood quiet. And then lastly, they noted that this was zoned residential and not zoned for business.
Thank you, John.
And based on what I heard, I guess I don't see those issues in this particular application. So with that, I'm gonna off resolution, waive the reading, approving with the five conditions, I'm gonna exclude number four, requesting an interim use permit to allow the operation of a flow tank therapy business out of a residence at 1010 South Ridge Road. Excuse me.
I guess I'd like to stick with the six conditions, and that's kinda what the Commission recommended.
I'm not gonna raise a big stink about it, but it's one car, one at a time, but...
I think, you know, I think that, I kinda feel the same way, that I think we've kinda restricted parking, and it's a concern of one resident up there, of them parking on the curb, that, you know, the owner is okay with them parking in the, in their driveway.
Dave Schnobrick, in the past, the only thing similar to an interim use permit would be a home occupation conditional use permit, and that's where we do have businesses locating in residential areas, and, except that those businesses can stay there for an indefinite period of time. And I would say 95% of the time, there always was off-street parking that was a requirement of receiving those conditional use permits. So that's been a standard in considering those kind of permits.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. You know, if they have room, I'm fine, I'm not gonna, we can certainly leave that condition in if that's an issue, I'm not, I didn't figure one car at a time on that street. I'll amend my motion, leave that in, leave the conditions in.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, oh, I think that's a resolution.
Yep.
We have a motion, offer a resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, good luck.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Good luck on your business.
Thank you.
Item 4.4, rezoning comprehensive plan amendment petition from Arlen and Sue Body.
See, this item was actually pulled from the agenda and will be moved to the next meeting.
Oh, okay, thank you. Item 5.1, League of Minnesota Cities Legislative Distinction for 2019, Chris?
The League of Minnesota Cities just wanted to pass on this information that they have recommended Representative Torkelson and Senator Doms as legislators for distinction for 2019, and they just wanted to share that information with the council. So they were selected out of 833 member cities, and they did, I think it was, 20 House members and 14 Senate members.
Thank you. Do we need a motion ordered and filed? No.
Yeah.
I'll offer it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Item 6.1, grant application for the third criminal investigator for the police department. You have anything you wanna add to that, Dave, or? I think you brought this before us earlier on.
I'm Dave Walker, Police Chief, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm certainly here to answer any questions that you would have regarding that. Primarily, we're looking for outside sources of funding for that third investigator, we're always trying to, certainly try to find those funding options. This, you know, if this was approved by the council, we're able to make application for this, and ultimately, we would get the grant. Primarily, we'd want that investigator to be, you know, what we're getting out of it from the city standpoint is, I think sex trafficking is an important issue, a regional challenge, and then we're gonna have them specifically assigned child protection cases within the city of New Ulm, which, you know, they, they work together relatively well, and that, that would take a fairly large portion of the investigator's time. So that's, that's really the driving force behind that.
Is this a pretty competitive grant, do you know?
Very competitive.
So...
When, when they ask about, you know, like, you know, the chances, it's, you know, it's a Department of Justice grant, that, it's always, it's always kinda difficult to guess, but I, you know, I would say, I'd say we're certainly competitive in the process, but, you know, both the grants together, I, you know, if I were to guess, I'd say, you know, 30, 35% chance that we'd actually get it.
Well, what I saw was really nice is there's no matching dollars, which, you know, we like at that point, where some of them you have to match 50% or 30% of the, whatever you're receiving, and this is a $672,000 grant, correct?
Correct.
So, I say we try for it and go after it, see what, we're lucky enough to get it. Certainly provide some staff salaries for a couple years.
So I have a question, so this is a different grant than the first one you, we okayed?
Correct.
So this is, and this is just for the grant, 'cause the memorandum of understanding that's attached is for the task force, correct?
Correct, that, that would be the, that would be the region we're basically assigned, and that's what makes us, you know, much more competitive in that grant process. So we have that, you know, fairly large region involved. You know, for the most part, it's, it's a task force that we're working on, or working with, the Brown Lion, Redwood, Renville Task Force, but there's other counties involved, which again, increases our odds significantly.
So this task force will take place regardless of the grant?
Pardon me?
Is this task force gonna take place regardless of getting the grant?
We're, we're in the...
This, this is a task force already?
We're already in the, in the Brown Lion, Redwood, Renville Drug Task Force, and that's also like our emergency response unit, basically our SWAT unit, we're already in that. That, that, you know, as we speak, we've, and we've been in that for at least the last 25 years.
Okay.
So, you know, a lot of our partners are, remain the same, and that's why we thought it was a, it was a good fit. But we, we expanded, so we have Nickle County involved, Blue Earth County involved, and there are also Wanton County, which is outside of our, our normal task force, but there are counties that we work with a lot, and as far as the sex trafficking grant that we've had, have approved in the past, Blue Earth County and Nickle County were, were involved in that. And I, the, the memo of understanding, I just felt that that was, that was significant, it's something I wanted to share as far as kinda showing that. You know, when we talk about a regional grant, what does that exactly mean? Those, those would be the counties and agencies involved.
Chief, maybe you could, you know this much better than I, but maybe you can clarify this, I don't know if you misspoke when you indicated that we were already participants in the, the drug task force, in the drug, which is correct.
That's right.
But that we also were participants in an earlier sex trafficking task force.
Correct.
And that did receive some grant funding, but my understanding is that that funding is essentially exhausted or close to it. This would replenish it, so there are two different task forces. The, the new memorandum of understanding is because these two other agencies are being added on, which would presumably make it more attractive for the grant.
Correct.
Having other, and then in addition, as you've probably noted, and one of the matters that Chief is bringing up is that our lead investigator would be working substantially for the new organization if the grant is received, but right now, there's an enormous strain on their resources for the child protection cases, and this would provide a source of funding to take care of that?
Yes, yes.
So that, it would be a win-win, I think, although then you may need another investigator to help flesh things out.
That's, that's what I was wondering is, like, you know, our investigator now is listed on here as being kinda the lead person of this group.
Right.
And if we don't get that grant, is this task force, is he still gonna be taking on that role?
No.
He won't take on that role, so this...
He won't. I, I'm really looking for, I'm always, you know, I'm always really concerned what, what affects New Ulm, 'cause that's who I work for. You know, what we're really getting from that is, you know, getting that outside funding source for taking care of our child protection, which has grown substantially. You know, we've, you know, county personnel, like human services, they've, they've had to increase, county attorney staff has had to increase, and, you know, we're, we're really breaking at the seams with that, and this would provide that opportunity. It would be a two-year funding mechanism, and then after that, you know, I would, you know, I, I mean, I'll be very straightforward, I'd be asking to, to absorb that position as far as a third, third investigator, which is already built into our next year's budget, starting half the year, simply because I, I really feel there's, there's the need. But we're always, we're always looking for outside funding sources.
And we appreciate that, so I'm gonna go ahead and offer a motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Application.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no, motion carries. Item 6.2, retirement of canine Booker, Brook, Booker from the New Ulm Police Department. Dave, wanna...
President Schmitz, members of the council, due to the, our canine Booker having a degenerative spine diagnosis, in the position where the specialists are recommending that we retire the dog for, for the dog's quality of life, and no longer is able to, to serve in the capacity as a, as a canine, a police canine, which is, you know, very physically demanding. It's a young dog, you know, we, they certainly do their research, we've, we've purchased dogs through McDonough for, actually, the Juno was also purchased through that, that, through McDonough. It just, I think it was just, you know, a bad set of circumstances, you know, and you never know exactly, you know, if it's the DNA, or if it's something that happened some point, at some point during training that, where it really, you know, encountered some type of injury, but it's, the, the recommendation that we got, the diagnosis that we got, is that, you know, they're recommending that we retire the dog. And then, you know, the past practice has always been that the dog is, is donated, assigned as a, basically as a pet to the, to the handler, and that, basically for the, you know, for, for Booker, that's, that's the only person that, that he's ever identified as, as the owner, as, as the companion, so. And again, that has been past practice, this is our third canine, we've had Thunder, Juno, and now Booker, and that's always been the past practice. The first two dogs were primarily trained with Jeremy Reed, who's now an investigator at the Sheriff's Office, and then this, this dog was assigned to Officer Byrow. And it's just, you know, we, we feel kinda bad about it, you know, that, that the dog had to retire this early. You know, generally, we get about eight years out of a canine, and they, you know, they're wired for it, they love working, but again, it's just, it's just medical, just time to retire the dog.
Do we know what our plans are for the future? Will we... Will we?
We'd, we'd really like to evaluate the, the situation. You know, we know that to purchase another dog, you know, we, we looked at it, and there's a couple of different options. We can purchase a dog that's, that's basically trained, and then all we have to do is, you know, get the person, or get the, the dog to, to, to work with the handler, which is extremely important, but you, you pay more for the dog upfront, but then there's less training cost involved, especially like, let's say, if we would go with, with Byrow. Right now, Byrow and Murphy would be the only one that have a background with handling a canine, that's a part of our department. So it's, it's cheaper as far as the training part, but the dog costs more. The other option is, you buy a dog that, you know, you start from, from day one, but it, it's a little cheaper, that the dog has not been trained, and, you know, you, you get the handler, and then the, there's a lot of training involved with that, there's a lot more training cost. Essentially, both of them are over twenty thousand dollars, when it's, when it's all said and done. Plus, the other thing that we're looking at from a law enforcement standpoint is, you know, I don't know if anybody can, can predict it, we, we can't, we don't know where the tides are going as far as the legalization of marijuana. So like, right now, if they would choose to do something like, let's say, next year, that would really compromise our ability to work with that dog for, for drug investigation. So, we're really trying to, it's going to change how the, the dogs are trained. So at this point, we'd really like to look at what our opportu, or what our options are. The counties talked about having a canine. We'd like to maintain a canine, but you know, sometimes if you actually have two dogs working together, it, it really, really promotes the, the program. It's, it, there's, there's huge benefits, it's almost like a multiplier. But, um, you know, we, I'm not necessarily saying we want to buy, purchase two dogs, because that would be a lot for one agency, but if we're able to work with the county on, on something like that, that would certainly be a possibility. The county's also been approved to purchase a drone, you know, so, I mean, I, I really think that, you know, and we're talking about search and rescue and, and things like that, I think this is really a time to really look at, you know, what our best fit is as far as the canine, going forward, the canine program. I think it's valuable. I mean, I, I'm certainly an advocate that we, that we, you know, move in that area, it's just, I don't think we're ready right now for the next year's budget, because there's just too many unknowns.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Dave.
I'd really like to, I think I've been on the council long enough, this is the third dog that we've worked with, and I just, you know, when you, when you have a, somebody who's escaped, and they've ran into an empty building, and it's dark in there, and you either send a police officer in, or you send a dog in, and it only takes one of those incidents to pay for that dog, and I'll always support continuing with a canine for our law enforcement. If we can share one with the county, that would even be better yet, because I think we, we potentially don't have enough full-time use for a dog, but I know we remember some discussions in the past that we've even borrowed the dog out to, or brought the dog to, like, CPI or Springfield when they've had issues, and I just hope that we would continue with this program, and I would still like to see it even in the two twenty budget and not, we don't know where the marijuana issue's going to go, and there's some people really supporting on one side, but boy, you hear a lot of opposition on the other side, will Minnesota do it or not? But just training for some of the other issues, I know marijuana is always, seems to be the number one thing our dogs search for, but I worry about some of these other, anything we can do to keep our officers safe, I'm, I'm going to support that, and so I hope that we have, can find it in our budget to bring a new dog back in two thousand twenty. But, but with this particular topic, I'm going to go ahead and offer the resolution and waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? I guess I'm just gonna add to Lass's comment, I think too, we ought to throw some money in the budget, so.
We got, you know, that's about a year and a half before we can rebudget again.
Right.
So I think we need to get some in there, so if we need to do it, we're ready to do it, and...
Especially if we try to train her on.
Right.
Because then there's a lot of training time, too.
Anyway, other than that, any more comments? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point three, person construction requests to place scaffolding on the sidewalk. Chris?
Yeah, person construction is looking to place scaffolding on nineteen oh one North Minnesota Street, which is the Franson Bank Building, and it's over the fourteen-day period, so it needs council approval. They'll begin September fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and they're not to exceed a six-week period.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. Item six point four, offer resolu, oops, excuse me, New Ulm Fire Department donations. Almost made the motion.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting the donations to the fire department. One thousand, seven dollars and fifty cents from the Lamp lighter Lounge, two hundred dollars from Gene and Margot Huffman, and nineteen dollars and forty cents from Cybergrants through three M donation dispersment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point five, award bid for German Park Amphitheater Construction Project. Mr. Schmitz?
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Director. I also have Jim Harbaugh, Landscape Architect with Bolton and Mink with us. President Schmitz and counselors, a week ago yesterday, we had the authorized bid opening with some good, some good news, and the good news was that there were three competitive bids. There was some concern that there may be zero bids, or one bid. And so you have the information in the packet before you, along with a few different options for you to consider. The base bid, which is the basic amphitheater structure itself. Alternate number one is the shade structure along the top portion, the top tier of the amphitheater. And alternate number two is the south staircase, which is part of the grand master plan of the park that was adopted quite a number of years ago, on this depiction over here. Fundraising continues, as you see in the report, there's over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funds that have been put into our depository or pledged, and the Friends of German Park plan to continue fundraising. The completion date for the project is August fourteenth of next year, so there's a liberal construction timeframe beginning this autumn, and then, you know, next spring and summer. The project is, would be scheduled to be completed before the double state baseball tournament taking place across the street at Miller Park and Johnson Park in late August of two thousand and twenty next year. I know we have the founding directors of the Friends of German Park in the audience here, Dr. Ann Vogel and Mr. Denny Warda. Jim Harbaugh, the Landscape Architect with Bolton and Mink, was commissioned, brought on board, and did the, the conceptual plan in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. And so, it's been a project that's been discussed for a decade, and now it's coming to fruition in hopes of a decision for the Outdoor Performing Arts Center. We have many indoor performing arts centers in our community. I would not advocate for adding another indoor performing arts center, but this would be our only outdoor performing arts center for Monday night concerts, Wednesday evening municipal band concerts, and theatrical performances. I imagine State Street Theater and other theater groups going down there to use the facility. Many other events, from weddings to corporate events, community events, National Night Out. Certainly will be a premier destination in our downtown central core of the community, equidistant to the North Enders and the South Enders. So, my recommendation would be for you to authorize awarding the project to the low bidder, Web Construction out of Mankato, which is also the contractor, the prime contractor at Johnson Park Renew Project, and staff is quite satisfied with their work to date, and plan to be on schedule for completion before winter, so that'll be done well before the double state tournament next year.
Thank you, Dave. I guess I'll start it out.
Oh, I thought Chris had something to add.
Can I add?
Chris has something to add.
Yeah, it would be my recommendation, looking at the bids, to move forward with the base bids, doing the amphitheater, foregoing the shade structure at this point in time, and then adding the south staircase. I think that'll get us to a fair number to finish the project out, and there's always, it'll be built so we can add a shade structure at a different point in time, whether we continue fundraising or not, but to get the project done sooner rather than later, I think foregoing the shade structure at this time would be able to move the project forward, and then also adding a five percent contingency, just in case there are any problems that arise, that'll bring us up to about eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to finish the project out.
Thank you. Took the words out of my mouth. Anyway, I think too, that's exactly what I was going to say, I think we need to get moving forward with it. I think we wasted enough time on it, I think if we don't do it now, we're not ever going to do it. We'll never do it in my lifetime, and probably everybody at the council here, because finding money is always a hard problem, and we have people that have considerably donated money toward the project, and I don't want to lose that either. So I really think we need to go with item one, A and C, like Chris just made the comment, and somehow, see if we can raise some more money and whatever, and go forward, where we need to be.
Can we hear about the fundraising, Doc Ann? Do you have a plan or proposal? Is that something you could talk about?
Ann, wallow at five sixteen South State Street. Well, I just wanted to ask the people in the audience who came here because they want the shovel in the ground this fall, and I passed out over twenty-three stickers that indicate that's exactly what they want to do, and I think that it's a sentinel project, it's just kind of like, you know, a hermit monument, took some time. We weren't there when that went on. And I remember when I was a kid, almost, when the Glockenspiel was built, and that took some time. And this is one of these legacy things, that's going to be here long before everybody else in this council chamber is going to be around. And I think we should invest in the future, and particularly in the youth, and this is going to mean anybody who has mobility problems, whether you have twins and triplets and you're going in a wagon, this is going to be ADA acceptable. It's going to be perfect, because we're going to be able to get anybody in there with a mobility challenge, and we have people in group homes, we're not going to exclude anybody, no age, and it's not going to raise taxes, and this is something people are willing to give to the community for their enjoyment, and particularly music, and I think we should keep music floating through the Minnesota River Valley, and New Ulm is a sentinel piece for that to be delivered. So, from my standpoint, and the reason I'm so interested, is my profession is medicine, and I'm always interested in the well-being of individuals, and music is the elixir of life. And I can tell you, it doesn't have side effects, like a lot of pills sometimes some of us are pushing, for good reasons. So, I really am behind this, and I'm willing to put in some more effort, and I have a partner, and that's Denny Warda, and he's in the front seat here, and he has been, while I was gone for more training, he's the one who got all the funds together to put the pergola together, that was a piece on the master plan. This is the last piece of this puzzle. It's twenty-three years later since we started the restoration and cut the ribbon. And Denny continues to get funds by people paying for the historic pavers, and that'll be ongoing, and there are ways to reach out, and I personally want everybody to wear a sticker and pass the word around, and everybody can participate. I think anybody who plays music, or anybody who teaches voice or instruments, I'd like to send out a letter and say, why doesn't each little group dedicate this to the finishing of the park? And then we'll recognize them. And some little kids in the first grade, and whatever school system they're in, can say, I helped build that thing. And that's what you want a community to do, to rise up and be part of it, and say, we did this, and we did it for the benefit of the community. So, that's where I'm coming from. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
I have one question, and I always hate to be the Debbie Donner, but I do get concerned about our funding, and you know, how projects will come along. In your statement, you kind of said that it won't cost the taxpayers anything. So you, are you thinking that you're going to be able to raise the funds to complete out this project? Is that what your intent?
There'll be something, there're going to be something they're going to ask from the city, because you all have things to enhance the life of the city, but the vast majority is going to come from private funds. It took us three years from nineteen ninety-three to ninety-six to do surveys all over, and it was mainly private citizen city project, and that would, I engendered, it's going to be the same thing. It's not going to cost you more maintenance, it isn't going to cost you another park, it's right down there, it's the last piece to put in the puzzle. I've heard a lot of the pros and cons, but I think people think, well, now you're going to raise your taxes because we've got this extra piece in the park. That's not going to be the case. The city always kicks in some things that are going to be done to enhance our parks. We've paid for a lot of playgrounds, so it's not that the city isn't going to participate, it's a city, private citizen partnership, as I see it. And I think we all have responsibilities, not only us who are standing here or sitting here, people who are around that corner, right there, we all have a responsibility to see to it that we can provide something that citizens can benefit from, and may not have the wherewithal on their own to make it happen.
Okay.
President Schmitz?
Yes.
Counselor? The only thing I'd like to point out along lines of the questions that Counselor Fisher had, is I understand the financial information, we have two hundred and eighty-eight thousand available now in funds, a hundred and seventy thousand in pledges. I don't know what the terms of those pledges are, if they're over a year, or five years, or ten years, but I would assume if the council goes ahead and orders this in, there's a contractor who's going to want to get paid, and whatever shortfall is there, it's coming out of the city budget. So if you're doing your budget, you would need to plan for the worst-case scenario to cover that, and if there's money there, you wouldn't. But I mean, just, I, I don't know if you can even count these pledges without, and you know, they aren't there until they're there, till they're paid.
But some of them we have. Nicole, do you know, have an answer to that?
That's a breakdown here. There's two hundred and eighty-eight thousand in cash that we have, but it just says a hundred and seventy thousand in pledges. I mean, you know, there's a lot of different capital campaigns, and sometimes it's a three-year pledge, or a five-year pledge, I have no idea what the terms of these are.
Nicole, do you know? Do you have more information on that?
No, I...
I do.
Okay.
I do. President Schmitz and counselors, the pledges have, were told to me that they would be directed to the city upon approval of the project, consummation of a contract with the prime contractor. So I would anticipate those pledges coming in this year, if you authorize the contract be consummated tonight. The pledges want the project to proceed, and that's really what they said. If this doesn't proceed, then we will be reconsidering our pledges, but if you authorize proceeding, those pledges are good, and I anticipate those coming to the finance department this year, if you authorize the project today.
Some of these pledges are back in two thousand and fourteen and stuff, so they're still good, right?
And that's why they're a little antsy. The project has been worked on and discussed for a few years, and those individuals and couples are interested in seeing this project move forward, or direct their funds elsewhere to another worthy community cause.
And, and think about it, how lucky are we that four hundred and fifty thousand is being pledged in our community to make this park happen? Four hundred and fifty thousand, that's more than half of what it takes to build this park. I mean, some communities wouldn't come anywhere close to that amount. It's our central park, it is where I always hear the swimming pool stories from everywhere I go, from the old timers that love that swimming pool down there.
Yeah.
But it's still a wonderful park, that's used a lot, I know that we have a lot of music in that park. I, I support this, I want to make sure that this happens, is what our council president and city manager already talked about. We're going to have to work hard on our budget, it's going to be a tough budget year with, if we add this back in, or add this in for our two thousand and twenty budget, but I'm going to go ahead and offer, authorize the, to bid the award. Now, Mr. Dalton, are you thinking we should do A and C, or just A?
A and, A and C, and then a, a five percent contingency, just in case there's something underground that we don't see, so that...
So the A is the actual amphitheater for seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents. The alternative south staircase is sixty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty cents, and then we always put a contingency in, because we all know that changes happen when we start building, a five percent. So that is a total of, where's my total amount?
Eight seventy-six.
Eight hundred and seventy, oh, yeah, there, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand. So I'm going to offer that bid and see where it goes. So I'm going to offer that bid and see where it goes. Or motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Well, I, I certainly appreciate everything that everybody is donating, I really do, and I appreciate the park, and I've gone down and I've looked at the amphitheater, and yes, it is in poor shape, nobody can sit along that hillside. I also see some major things in our community, like daycare, that really need some attention, and I have a hard time, you know, putting all the money in our park and rec, with our new facilities, and our Herman Heights parking lot, and now the amphitheater, and we don't have anything for daycare, and that's a driving economic problem in this city, so I will support this, because our staff feels that it is supportable, but I really think we need to take a look at, at some of the other stuff that we need to maybe help along, other than just our park and rec system.
And maybe that's something that we can push our EDA and some of our other groups on, to step up and help in those areas, too, so we got some work to do, you're right.
Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
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 Close, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
And I thought they were all here for assessment rolls.
23 years.
That was right. You were right. Okay. Item number seven, reports of claims, accept a list of claims paid in the amount of $1,119,241.74, and a list of claims to be paid in the amount of $1,948,610.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I usually never ask questions, but I did send a question into the city staff, and I didn't hear back. Some questions on the wellness.
Yes.
Can you give me a little more information?
So that was for our STEP Challenge, for the prizes for the STEP Challenge that the city does, and the South Central Service Co-op will be reimbursing that amount back to us.
Say that one more time. So, a wellness challenge for the city employees.
Yes, and those were for the prizes for that, and then the South Central Service Co-op will be reimbursing us that amount.
All I needed to know, I just wanted to, it just stood out to me, and I was like, ah, okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. No more business, meeting adjourned.